Can you hear me in here?
Almost.
Oh, yes.
Someone needs to tell me when it's.
It says spring.
There it goes. Okay, you're ready.
Everyone, getting a little bit late because of identical difficulties, but it's time to convene our regular scheduled meeting.
Yeah.
Please stand.
Turn your mic off. Do it again.
Can you hear me?
Yeah. So do the whole thing again.
Once again, apologize for technical difficulties, but it's time to convene our regular scheduled board meeting. Everybody like to please stand, make your appropriate move, and help us recite the Pleasant Belieghence. A pleasant belieghence to the latter. Public, which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Especially those who are in attendance physically and those who are in attendance via remote. Before we begin to make a couple of statements here or announcements, first of all, some of the board members of your RCS staff may attend the meeting by electronic communications pursuant to Public Act 101-640. Some board members may like to attend the board meeting via remote means. The public can view the live stream at all open portions of the meeting on Rensselaer City's 137 Facebook page. And the recording of the meeting will be posted on the RCS137 YouTube channel and also on the RCS137 website. For public comments. If I further do, if we could, we'll do a roll call for attendance, but before we do that, please make sure that the minutes must reflect each board member participating in the meeting by announcing themselves present. State that they're attending remotely or in person and verify that they can hear one another in all discussions of other matters. If we could, just do a roll call.
Andy Graham.
Yeah.
And here in present.
John Brotherton.
Here in present.
Bill Swett.
Here in present.
Mark Keys. Joan Fitzgerald.
Here, I'm remote. I apologize for being remote, but I was exposed to COVID and I'm waiting for test results.
Robinson.
Here in present.
Sandra Ullot.
Here, attending remotely.
There is a quorum of board members participating at the meeting. And this is also to be reflected in the minutes so we can proceed with the meeting. In addition to requirements for the open meetings under OMA, we're also currently keeping verbatim recording of the open meetings by recording it and making it open and available to the public under provisions of the OMA. This is occurring now as the media is being recorded and is now live at Rensselaer City Schools Facebook. Later, there will be a link posted on our website through YouTube. Lastly, all votes must be conducted by roll call, so each board member spoke on each issue to be identified and reported. This is item number two, which is the agenda approval. Has everybody had a chance to review the agenda?
Yes.
We do have a couple of recommendations that remove item number eight, seventeen, and eighteen from the agenda. If nobody has any problems with that and would someone care to make a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
I think motion to approve the agenda as amended tonight.
Andy, did you hear that? Okay. Motion was made by Andy Graham. You heard a second?
I seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Robinson, and we'll need a roll call vote on that, please.
Graham. Ullot.
Aye.
Brotherton.
Aye.
Fitzgerald.
You're muted, Joan.
Aye.
Robinson.
Aye.
And Swett.
Aye. Okay, that's unanimous. Motion carries and you do this a pretty decent amount of things.
I don't know if you have any public forum. Do we have? Nobody. We don't need to read all that.
All righty, so what we want at item number four is to consent the two items. All the items in the consent agenda items are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted by a single motion and subsequent roll call vote. We want us back to item number five, in which a benefit item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered at a time of what group will play on in the agenda. Items in the consent agenda are A, the reading from July 10, 2020. Second, I need closed session minutes review for January 3, 2020 through July 2,020. The recommendation is to remain closed. I don't know, see the bills and treasuries report. donations. The writers again to review the consent agenda items.
I would like to add that United Way has provided $11,000 for us for school supplies for our students, so we are thankful for that.
Also, 200 bills and treasuries report, just a little side note here. For 2018 to 2019, $111,516.46 for 2019 to 2020, we already see $83,729.58. $7786. Even though our percentage based on enrollment increased last year from approximately 6.88% to 7.27%. Anybody have any questions, comments, concerns?
This is the first month that it dropped rapidly like that. I was watching.
This is just giving you the total for the last to compare last year to the year before, so that's what that total difference is. Right. Good question. Yes.
That you know COVID has impacted us all. Seven, ten items.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, Mr. Brotherton has made the motion to approve the consent agenda items, including gravitation of bills prepaid by the finance manager under board policy 4.50. You hear the second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Graham, and we'll need a roll call vote on that, please.
Ullot.
Sandra, you're muted.
She's, she knows. She's working on it.
There's not a head for yet.
Here.
Let's get back to that.
Aye.
No. Keys. Oh, I'm sorry. Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Robinson.
Aye.
Brotherton.
Aye.
Swett.
Aye. It's unanimous. The motion carries and is able to. This moves on to item number five. It's a discussion and possible approval of any items should be considered agenda. So this is point number six. This is the national memorandum of understanding from RCSVA slash RCS in RCSVA. Reopening tools, both the menus are included in your board packet. Some key points to consider about those, the memorandums of understanding. One is emergency sick leave if FFCRA is exhausted. Families first for coronavirus response act and two specifies for each employee's groups regarding responsibilities and flexibilities. RCSVA has been full about November 3rd is paid holiday and the RCSVA has been about STEM style. Any board members have any questions? If not, then would someone care to make a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Brotherton made a motion to approve the reviews of the RCSVA and RCSVA and RCS. As presented, this group. You hear a second?
I'll second that, Joan.
Ms. Fitzgerald seconded, so we'll roll call vote, please.
Robinson.
Aye.
Brotherton.
Aye.
Ullot.
Aye.
Graham.
Um.
Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Swett.
Aye. Okay, that's unanimous. The motion carries and the motion is right within first. This is on item number seven, which is an action item, the reopening plan updates and and we look to the superintendent.
Okay, um, not a lot of changes from the original reopening plan, but there are about four topics that I want to summarize for you. So one is to provide you some enrollment data. So I had some enrollment data as of 8/13 and 8/19. Our total enrollment as of yesterday, and it includes pre-K, is 1,656 students. Last year's enrollment at this time it was 1,819, so 1,819. That is approximately a 9.8% decrease in enrollment, so we are down about 163 students. The district average between the two different academies, so we have blended academy where they're both in person and at home, and the learn academy, which is the all at home remote option. Blended academy, the total district wide average is 57% are in blended and 43% are all remote in the learn. So that percentage, just an interesting note, that percentage between varies greatly between building to building. So I'm just going to give one example. So the extremes are Pleasant Acres has 58% of their students in the learn academy compared to East Lawn, there's only 31% in the learn academy. So that just shows you the difference across the district. Any questions about enrollment?
Where are the 160 students we're missing? Have they unenrolled from Rensselaer City Schools?
Um, some of them probably have, yes. So as of 8/13, we had 91 students at that time unaccounted for, and I don't have that updated number for you.
Okay.
We're 91. It is lower, obviously, but we're not missing, we're not unable to find 163 students. It's just the difference between last year and this year. So it's about 91 a week ago.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on enrollment? All right, item two is very quick, meal distribution. We held our first meal distribution on Monday. This was to distribute 2,480 meals, which is much, much lower than the typical 10,000 meals that we did a week last spring. And why is that? I don't have the exact answer, but we have some, some topics here that maybe are some possible reasons. So perhaps it's because it's a different, when the, when the parents come through the line, we have to check off each student's name. And in the spring, if you remember, you could pull up your car, you didn't even have to live here in Rensselaer. You could say that you needed 10 meals and we provided, we handed those out to you. So now you have to have a meal card and come through the line and we have to, this is ISBE procedures. We have to check off each child's name and then process that. So that could be one reason why the numbers are down. We anticipate that the meals go, may go up a little bit this Monday. It was the first Monday, so if it was a busy week being the first week of school, maybe this coming Monday, it might be a little higher. We hope it will be. Because the numbers were so low, we are going to narrow the window of distribution. It was three to six. Now we're going to narrow it down to four to six, and we'll see how that goes. But it is important for us to keep all the way till six o'clock because we're trying to hit families that may work until five. We will start providing that information to parents starting tomorrow about that change. Questions about meals? Okay. Another topic is that we have provided for the board to review tonight and for it to be posted after the meeting, which is a joint statement with our associations. A lot of people refer to those as unions, but we refer to ours as associations. So it's a joint statement with the associations and the board and administration. So I'm not reading that whole long letter to you, but I do have some summaries to provide that are included in the letter. And our associations have already signed the letter. On behalf of RCS and our associations, they want, we all want to acknowledge and address the increasing concerns about safety for returning to school in person. RCS has worked tirelessly to prepare for the return of staff and students this fall, and we have a comprehensive plan that puts the safety of administration and staff and students first. This plan has been developed collaboratively between RCS administration and staff, and this information has been shared in English and Spanish with our employees and families. RCS is meeting or exceeding all guidelines set forth by Illinois Department of Public Health, Illinois State Board of Education, and the Champaign-Urbana Public Health Department. We have worked closely with our associations as well as our non-association staff to make sure all are informed of our safety protocols, and all of our employee groups may provide feedback through their associations or directly to the school administrators or school board members. Part of our protocols include informing all employees of their rights under existing and new laws that are in place to protect their employment and safety in light of the COVID-19 pandemic. And the last one, IEA, that their goals are, have always been to allow staff to return to school if a safe environment has been provided. Ours was one of the first plans in our area to be reviewed by IEA local represent, local representation and found to meet the requirements for a safe environment. So this is not only a plan approved by RCSCA, RCESPA, the school board administration, but also by IEA levels above our local association. Any questions on that joint statement? All right, two more topics. One is the constantly changing guidelines. It, it, it is literally every day. I know you're not supposed to use that word literally. It is, it is every day that the guidelines are changing, and those guidelines are coming from ISBE, the state board, or the Illinois Department of Public Health. The tricky part was, and hopefully that's changed as of this evening, the tricky part was being notified of those changes. So we would just happen to stumble upon, if we opened up ISBE website and looked at a couple of pages, we may stumble upon the fact that those did, they were updated. So that was very frustrating, and I, I do believe based on an email tonight from ISBE that that hopefully will improve. An example of, of a major change was last week, we provided trainings to all of our staff regarding the safe return to work. So if they have a symptom or if they're identified with COVID, which we don't have yet, they needed to stay home. And so that was a whole process of training that we provided for them. When I, we provided that training, there was something called a test-based strategy. That test-based strategy is now gone, and, and there's a whole different process in place. So that's one week's time that that has completely changed. Um, let's see, little things. So yesterday morning, runny nose was a symptom. Yesterday afternoon, it was not, and today it's back in. I know it's a silly one, but if you have, if you know kids, especially elementary or little tiny pre-K kids, they have runny noses, so, so I guess it's back in. Um, I can tell you that I have been in close contact with a representative from the health department here locally, and I have been very happy with the response. I call, I have a connection, I get some answers. So that, that does make me feel a little bit better that I have someone that I know that I can call right away, and we can talk through situations, and they're very helpful and supportive. We, at this time, we have no known confirmed cases of COVID at RCS. And we did get an updated decision tree this afternoon or almost this evening from ISBE. We did get that translated already into Spanish, and we're going to provide that to our parents tomorrow. So that's, I also provided in your board packet, just in case you're bored, you want to read all the different times that it, that several different documents changed. I saved them, dated it, and then a new one came out. I saved it, dated it. So there are a lot of different documents. Any questions about the changes in guidelines? Okay, and the last one, this part is up to the board. It is to talk about, do you want to create your own metrics to determine when to close a classroom or a whole building? So this is something the board could consider, some strategies and metrics if they would like. We were hopeful still even this past Tuesday that we would see some metrics provided to us from the health department as they indicated that they were working on those, and I have not seen those. And I don't know if, you know, things change every day, so I don't, I do not know if they're going to continue to work on those. There are a variety of sample metrics that I provided, or the option is to just continue to do what we said that we would do and you, you, if something, if there is a confirmed case, then you do that close con, contact tracing, and that's how you determine who is not supposed to be at school, and then just keep going through that until at some point, I'm concerned about whether we'll have enough teachers, but that's almost a different topic that we would have to just handle when we get to that spot.
Does anybody have any questions for the superintendent?
No, I'm, I was just, on the metrics part, I just wanted to make it clear, I think.
Weber's talking, I can't hear.
Andy, turn your, turn your mic on.
It's on. No, he cannot take his mask off. We have to teach and talk all with masks on.
Can you hear me now, Joan?
Yeah.
Okay, um, in my dealings this summer with the public health department, they have been very quick to respond. They've been very quick to approve or suggest changes to your plan and operations. I don't think anybody on this board is qualified to make a metric decision. I think this, she, public health department can make that decision for us. They will make that decision for us. They've done it for factories. They've done it for every workplace in the county. The waste of our time to say one person gets it, teacher gets it, student gets it, Julie Frye and her staff have done a great job. I think we leave it to them. So if we haven't voted anything, number four is one we should go with.
So from what I read, according to the state Department of Public Health, they're leaving the metrics of the school, district to decide on what they want to do, and just from some of the conversations that I have observed from some of the board members, it seems like no one's really consistent as far as what possible metric we want to, uh, like to select. There was at least one board member said that if one person gets it, old school should shut down.
Well, we, we put, our staff put in a great amount of time. We're keeping the kids six feet apart. We're making them wear masks. So we're keeping them six feet apart, the guidelines, and the masks are on, and those are suggested guidelines that are supposed to work, that have control spread and mitigated. Then that's what we do. And I'm not saying Julie Frye would come out. I'm saying our staff would talk to Champaign Public Health, and they would give a recommendation. And Michelle would make the recommendation to other board members to make. I'm not saying they'd say shut down. They would, they could, but they have no enforcement capabilities in that. They, they're not a, they, they can't tell you, you have to shut down. The government, the Champaign Public Health cannot make a shutdown.
But they would make, but like what you said, they would make their, they would make a recommendation to us, I feel.
And that's what I feel we need to go with. As an expert, everyone wants to see where the community is going.
But I got a scenario for you, okay?
You have to speak louder.
Can you hear me? I've got a scenario for you, okay? One school, one kid tests positive, okay? The rest of us is cool. What do you do?
Well, by our policy, the kids aren't supposed to be within six feet of us, and that thing should be by itself.
But if I said bust, what about bus stop? How can you stop, I think you stop them from interacting at the bus stop.
Well, we're not stopping them when they get out of school either. They're on heavy weather, they're at the park, they're on Walmart, they're everywhere anyway, so. What we're doing is we're controlling the spread inside our building. They're not spreading COVID inside our building. We're following the policies that we have approved last month.
But what if they're different grades and they interacted?
I'm telling you, it's not spreading in our school. They're going to Walmart. They're going to County Market. They're having family gatherings. It's happening all over town. Spiders isn't going to go away.
But what I'm saying is, you gotta give the test positive. Kid rides the bus, at the bus stops, there's multiple kids from multiple grades. So we cannot control whether or not they stay. New Angeles is distancing at the bus stop, but they're all from the same school.
But we follow contact tracing procedures at Champaign County Public Health. That's pretty close, and we follow any recommendations of just for the part. None.
I.
We need to listen to the majority of the parents as well. Every parent that wanted to send their kid to school knows the risk and they know that going in. It's not, it's not, it's not like margin just didn't pop up.
All right, Joan, you want to step, jump in?
I respectfully disagree that we should wait for someone else to tell us what to do. We know that if we have two children with COVID in one building, we should have a plan. Not just say, okay, call someone else and say, okay, we have two. What should we do? I, I think it is imperative that this is our district, our children, our village. We need to have at least a minimum plan, what we're going to do. So that when it happens, if it happens, we know immediately this is what we're doing. I mean, if a teacher comes down with COVID and her A and B, her A and B and C and D classes, I don't think any of them should be anywhere near her. I mean, I'm not going to wait for the health department to tell me that. I know in my mind, if she has COVID, I don't want any children in her presence. And I think we need to make a few metrics like that, that say if a teacher comes down with COVID, both her classes go remote. Because we don't know, yes, we've all got masks on. Yes, we all think we're safe. But every mask can have a flaw. A mask can be fitting too loose. The teachers aren't going to run around retightening masks all day. I, I just think that it is, it is our responsibility to have some kind of plan in place. If the health department sends out their guidelines, we could see how they match with ours and change ours if need be, or just decide to keep our own.
I, I agree with Joan. Wearing a mask and being six feet apart, even though we're doing everything that we can to keep our staff and students safe, those are not guarantees that you're still not going to be able, for someone to still be able to spread the COVID. You know, so I, if, if the Department of Health has not given us a metrics yet, which they were working on, then I think it's our responsibility as a school board to develop our own in the meantime. I mean, these kids are our responsibility. The staff is our responsibility. We need to set something in place that says if We need to set something in place that says, if A happens, then B, C, and D happens. And I, I think that, you know, if we don't do that, we're not doing our job. I mean, I think that's, we were elected to have the best interest of the kids and, you know, everyone. And, and like you said, Joan, if, then if they come out with a metrics, then let's see how it matches up. But if they haven't developed one for us to follow yet, that is our job to do that.
And I agree with you, Andy, they're going to be going all over town, doing all kinds of different things. We can't control that, but we need to control what's happening within our costumes.
With the public health department, Michelle's going to be one of the first ones to know if a teacher or a kid gets contracted. They're going to call her.
Yeah.
He's going to know before, a lot of people, and they're going to go immediately into contact tracing mode. I don't know if any of you know that, but as soon as something gets tested positive, there's somebody from the Health Department in contact with that positive person. Who have you been in contact, where have you been?
Yeah.
Everybody, right then and there, immediately. And so we will know within, I don't know, hours, you think, Michelle, minutes, not minutes, but probably hours, when they have a positive test, that we have that, and.
But if we don't have a plan, what good is knowing that?
She said if we don't have a plan, what good is knowing?
Our job is to not spread in our schools.
To not spread what?
Not to let COVID spread in our schools, that is our job. Our job is not to have it spread within our building. We can't have anything that happens up on our four walls.
So the current, the current plan is kind of what Andy explained, is once we get that call, then the Health Department, with our assistance, does that contact tracing. So that's the plan that's in place right now, is then those students or staff within close contact go home and are quarantined. So that's the current plan right now.
They're not tested?
That's, that's what the Health Department takes care of. So we quarantine them, and then they follow this lovely little chart that we have from the Health Department as to what they need to do.
A lot of those I agree on. If students test positive, I think that we should be, I think we should be shut down for next 14 days. Also, along with tracing of the contacted person. I think the best thing for us is to be more proactive than reactive.
Metrics, one, two, or three?
Do you want to maybe say what some of the possible metrics are for the public? Do you want me to read these?
Well, I was going to read.
Go ahead, go ahead.
See, Joan, did you have any comments? For the public, some of the metrics that we have on our agenda this evening. Number one, if one teacher tests positive, the whole building should shut down because a teacher is more likely to have been in different parts of the building than a student, instead of just a classroom. If one student is positive, classroom is down for 14 days instead of two. If two students from two different grade levels, the whole building should be down. The second metric is, anyone tests positive, the whole building shuts down for 14 days. The third metric, if the teacher tests positive, both A and B day classes, remote for 14 days. If one classroom has two infected students, both A and B day students, remote for 14 days. If three students from at least two different grade levels in a building get COVID, the whole building was remote for 14 days. And then the fourth metric is, just follow the Champaign Public Health guidelines. These are the four things that we're thinking about. Joan, do you have any comments?
I tend to lean more toward, keep the building open as possible. So I would lean more toward the three, than the one or two. That's, that's how I see it, how I see it.
I'd say, our staff did put together a plan. That it gave the, I mean, it's not like, I used to say, we worked since March 13th developing this plan. And if our plan is to work, then we should be okay. I mean, these kids want to be in school, the parents want to be in school, they need to be in school. We're missing a lot, we're missing a lot of things by keeping them home for 14 days. A lot of things. There's kids out there that, just plain simply, aren't going to do as well on remote learning and everything, and those parents have committed to us by sending their kids, that they are fine with the risk of sending their kids to school.
Well, you know, the 14 days is just the gestation period for the virus. Now, if those only three days, and we don't keep them out of school for three days, but it's 14 days. And some of these kids, believe it or not, we don't know what health conditions the parents have. We don't know if they have any elderly relatives living in the home. And we know that if you have certain health conditions, and if you're a certain age, and unfortunately, if you happen to be of a certain color, it's a definite impact for everybody.
And that's why the adults in the family have to make their decision. I mean, there's an adult in the family, they have to make a decision what's best for their family. If they're going to be around with grandparents, and their grandparents have existing issues, then it's probably best to keep the kids home. If they're just going to be at home with nobody watching them, then it saves us for them to be in the building.
But you don't think.
I agree that the, I agree that the children should be in school, and they should be learning, and yes, the parents have made that decision. But the next decision is, what happens when somebody in their classroom comes down with COVID? We're not talking about somebody getting sick. We're talking about the possibility of that child dying, and possibly causing other children to die. So it, it's not a simple, oh, we'll just do this, or we'll just do that. We have a responsibility to these children, their lives, their parents, their education. We can't just be laissez faire about the whole thing. I, I'm sorry, I'm very, very concerned about this. And I understand, my grandchildren are going back to school. I want children in school, it is the best place for them. But I don't want to send them to school with no plan. I just want a plan.
Well, Joan, are there the four possible possibilities, which one were you leaning towards?
If I were to be the only person voting, I'm trying to get my computer to let me back in. If I were the only person voting, I would go with metric one, for sure. If a teacher tests positive, not the whole building, let's see, where is that? Okay, metric three, if a teacher tests positive, both A and B classes are gone for 14 days. I mean, that's a given. The teacher's been in that room with those children, and they should be separated for a time period. I think if a classroom, metric one, the second one, if one student is positive, just like the teacher, the classroom's down for 14 days, we have to protect the rest of the children. And I think any more than I had to say three kids and the whole building goes down, but that would be my max.
Okay, so you can bump it around between one and threes, which one?
Yeah. My gut action is number two. I'm the one that told Michelle I wanted number two. But I've given it a lot of thought, and I've realized, as Andy said, the parents want their children in school. And if it just happened in one classroom in, say, Eastlon, then why are we closing down Northview Ple- Pleasant Acres, the junior high? It does make more sense. You know, I do want the children in the classrooms. I know what it was like to homeschool, it just doesn't happen as well as sitting there with your teacher. So I'd say a classroom or a teacher down, all the kids in that room go down for 14 days. Unless something else comes up that says it's more conducive, a better plan. But that's just my opinion.
I believe that she picked.
Number one, two, or three?
I, I believe she picked this, the second item from metric one, and then the first and third from metric three.
Yes.
Whatever the board determines, but I.
Yeah.
When did I start?
I think those three protect the students and the staff the best. And if, you know, I, I guess part of my reason is because they still don't understand how this virus spreads. They still don't understand how to, how to treat it. It's still a mystery to many doctors and hospitals, and it's just not something to play around with. My grandchildren spent nine days with their other grandmother, and she had COVID the whole time. It took them nine days to get her test back to her. She would sit in a tent with them every night and read them a story. They never got sick. There were nine people in that house, nobody else got sick. Now you tell me, how did that happen? Thank God it did, but we just don't know how it spreads. Someone else can be across the room from someone, as I was, and that person has COVID, and now everybody needs to be tested in that area. That's all I'm going to say on it.
So I just need to make absolutely certain what you want. You want number one for metric one?
No, number.
Number, number two. No, number two from, for metric one, and number.
One and three from metric three.
Right. Thank you.
Metric three.
Could you, what, what is the part of metric three that she's interested in, because I can't pull mine up?
Uh, metric three would be the, I'm trying, my computer set off again.
Go remote for 14 days, and if three students from at least two different grade levels in a building get COVID.
Okay, yeah, I, I don't go for that, okay.
Yeah, the whole building has to shut down.
Yeah, to me, two students is enough, I think three is too.
Any other board members have any? Well, board member, can it, everybody agree that if one student is positive, then the classroom is down for 14 days? If two students from two different grade levels, the whole building is down? Can they agree to that?
Somebody needs to make a motion, probably.
Well, I'm trying to figure out what we're going to be on.
But she said three.
Okay, I'll make the motion, since I'm the one that brought this up. If a teacher tests positive, both her A and B session go 14 days, and she goes home. I don't know where that one is. Oh, that's metrics three, the first one.
First one, hold on, before you go any further, Joan, other board. Joan? Andy?
People were my friends, dude.
Sandra? You agree with that one also? If a teacher tests positive, both A and B day classes, remote 14 days?
Yes.
That's one of our metrics. Okay, Joan, if you want to continue on with your second part?
You know what, I'll make this real easy for everybody. I'll go with metric three. It pretty much covers it.
Metric three, okay?
Yeah. Except, would you change the second? If one classroom has one infected student, both days are remote, not two infected students. If one kid in that classroom is infected, then everybody that's been in that classroom should go home.
We're going to have a situation, Joan, on a Friday, my kid is in there, that's Friday night. So either kid hasn't been in there, or whatever, the kid that was in there Thursday wasn't in there. Saturday, Sunday, Monday, you find out sometime during those three days. The Tuesday down for 14 days, and he hasn't been in there either, that kid, for four days.
Okay, I, I didn't hear you. You're sort of like fuzzy.
What I'm saying is, on that situation, you have a kid that tests positive on a Friday night.
Okay.
You got Saturday, Sunday, Monday, nothing. And Tuesday, you're going to, you're going to shut down the opposite day's kids when they haven't even been in contact with that kid ever. And then there's been four days since the people who were in that room on Thursday haven't been in there.
That's a good question, Andy. Would his class shut down, but not the other class?
Well, according to this, if one student is infected, both A and B day students are remote.
You need to, in, in here, it's if one.
Yeah. I'm asking you if you're changing it to if the kid's in A class, only the A class has to quarantine.
We do it one of two ways.
Yeah.
Sandra, what are your thoughts?
You've totally lost me, I don't even know what you're talking about now. I, I'm.
What about some other board members? What are their thoughts?
Well, where are you going, Andy's thoughts? Johnson?
I, I like metric three.
If metric three is the one that says, if three students in different grades test positive, the building shuts down, I don't agree with that. So if that's what everyone wants, then, you know, I'm not going to vote for it, but that's fine, that's.
Sounds like you've got a consensus for number three, and you got, Bill, we're going to vote again.
I don't think it's a consensus, we haven't heard from half the people.
There'd have to be a motion and a vote.
I agree.
I'm not making a motion.
You hear metric number three?
Although I do agree that I'd like to keep students as possible, but we have grade levels and three of us testing positive, it's, it's in time to, I think we should shut it down. And first, we're, you know, those might come from.
John? Since it says metric number three, therefore, if anybody has any questions or comments? Here to make a motion to approve the opening plan, including approval of this for metrics number three.
Can we, can we just, for the public, can I just read out loud what those are, again, because there's, we've gone back and forth? If I, so metrics number three is, if the teacher tests positive, both A and B day classes are remote for 14 days. If one classroom has two infected students, both A and B day students are remote for 14 days. And if three students from at least two different grade levels in one building test positive, the whole building's remote for 14 days. Is that, I just want to make sure that's, that the public can hear what you're voting on.
Thank you.
It's hard to understand, yeah.
Any more decisions to make, to make the motion?
I'll make the motion.
Your brothers and me making to approve the updates, should we open the plan, including the group of metrics? Read. You want here to second? I'll second it. Second by Bill Swad. And we will vote. Joan, roll call vote.
Oh, I didn't hear my name, sorry. Nay.
Robinson.
Aye.
Ula.
Nay.
Robinson.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Aye.
So we got more in favor, two again. I believe that motion carries. And, um, the building has been approved and. Until, receive further guidance. Thanks, everybody, for your discussion tonight. In the night, it's an action item, this IESA sports. I agree.
Um, so I just, it should be in your information. Updated guidance from IESA. Uh, initially, the IESA canceled all sports. And later, it's tested. Based on guidelines from IESA. Our fall sports are all outside, uh, which makes it possible for us to do those sports. But right now, we are doing softball, baseball, and cross country. Um, they've moved all of the indoor sports. And we typically have girls' basketball in the fall. So in September, I bumped up it. And, uh, boys' basketball would start December. Um, and those are all moved to January now. Volleyball, it's gonna be later in the spring. So they moved the indoor sports to the spring. Um, we are going to be doing cheerleading. Um, I wanted to clarify that we do not, most middle schools don't, but we do not do competitive cheer. So it's not a high contact activity. So what we do, and if you've ever been to our games, you know they. On the little fashion cheerleading that we do, so, uh, we're not doing a lot of throwing and those things. Uh, we've talked to the coaches there, and they know that expectation, some of the stuff they've done in the past, but it's not. Uh, we're also limiting, uh, competitions, so we have a lot less competition. Who we normally have, and we are not traveling, uh, generally, I don't think we have any on schedule at this point, not traveling outside of the room, like, uh, we just started. Well, we have that we've, um, we have had a lot of conversations with the local, uh, rest department as this has gone on, just to see about, you know, making sure we can have opportunities for kids. Um, and I know that the rest department's open to supporting us. Um, but the good news is we have our IESA sports now. So that crisis is over.
And I just wanted to say, again, like, a few weeks ago, our gym stays, when, when everybody gets very tough, we need to stay. We are more than willing to work with you and give everything back to my kids.
I was gonna ask, any more? Any board member have any questions for Dr. Woods? Thank you, Dr. Woods, appreciate it. Okay, since we don't have any questions, uh, do you need any more discussion? Or is someone here to make the motion to approve the fall IESA sports, following IESA and Champion of Public Health District guidelines and?
Make the motion.
Motion was made by Mr. Graham to approve the fall IESA sports.
I second it.
Seconded by Mr. Robinson, and we'll need a roll call vote.
Robinson?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
FitzGerald?
Nay.
Graham?
Um.
Ula?
Nay.
It's what?
Aye.
That's one favor, two. So, motion to motion carries. For program to approve. Is this item number ten?
Do you want me to do this one?
It's an action, it's, uh, board policies approval. So, new tonight, we have board policy five, three, three, oh, sick days, vacation days, holidays, and leaves. It's, um, regarding the, uh, November third as being a paid holiday, same as RCS, RCESPA, MOU, oh. Uh, we also have board policy seven, three, four, zero for student records, and seven, three, four, five, use of educational technologies, student data privacy, and security. Uh, just one thing of reminder for this policy, which is seven, three, four, five. The board has to answer one of the questions, as was discussed at our last board meeting. We do not have a privacy officer. It is not required. Unless we determine that it's gonna be required. Anybody have any questions? If not, if you go through down through your board package, you'll see that you get number twenty-one. And it says, boards may designate an individual, other than superintendent, to serve and pass be a proxy officer, such as a business manager, IT director, district records custodian. And the question is, as the board designated a privacy officer? Would you say no is a default answer? Or yes, superintendent, superintendent is designated to serve as privacy officer? What shall we do?
And their recommendation from, um, our press policy is the default, which is no.
I made a motion to go with the default.
The, uh, motion was made to approve the three board policies with the recommendation for question number twenty-one. The answer is no, default. And motion was made by Mr. Graham. Anyone here to second? I second it, accepted by Mr. Robinson. New roll call vote, please.
Graham?
Aye.
Ula?
Sandra, we're voting, if you recall.
Having a hard time, I'll come back.
Your music.
Aye.
FitzGerald?
Aye.
Pete, I'm sorry, Robinson?
Aye.
And Swat?
Aye.
I vote aye.
Thank you. So that will lie, so. As unanimous, a motion carries, and policies have been approved. Next items at eleven, it's, uh, action, it's grants, digital equity, and then it's Ms. Ferrex will do the presentation.
Evening. Um, so I have some, uh, good information to share. Uh, one of the, um, pieces out of the CARES Act is, uh, which is part of the federal, uh, money. Is a competitive grant was released called the Digital Equity Grant. Um, it was released probably two weeks ago, and I wrote for it, submitted it last week. Um, the purpose is to help support, um, filling the digital divide. So providing, um, devices, hotspots, um, for, uh, students, um, in the school. So that is the purpose of the grant, so we did write, write for it. We put in, um, I wrote for teletherapy software, Chromebooks, hotspots, and Cisco WebEx conferencing, um, units to be used. Uh, there's a specific formula that calculates how much we could ask for. Again, it's competitive, so it's not guaranteed that we're gonna get it. I'm just hopeful that we will, uh, but we wrote it for, I wrote it for a hundred and four thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars. So if you approve that, and hopefully we will hear pretty soon, um, on that grant. Um, next month, uh, I'll be bringing forward another grant that, um, just was released. And, um, I'm gonna start writing that one, and it is also through federal money. Um, both of these, St. Malachi, will get a share of the funds, um, as well, since it's federal. So the next one that just was released that I'm gonna start writing for is also about technology. But it's a professional learning grant. Um, and so the purpose of that is to provide educators and families professional development around the use of, um, around digital citizenship and the use of devices. There also is a formula for this, for the maximum. It's based on the number of teachers that we have. And so, um, the max budget that I could ask for is about eighty-six hundred dollars. And I will try to ask for the maximum to provide professional development. But I will bring that to you, uh, next month after we have submitted it. And hopefully we'll get that one as well.
Anybody have any questions? Anybody have any questions for Jennifer?
Well, is any of you to approve both grants now, since you don't have to wait on them coming?
Um, she won't really be waiting, because she already submitted the other one. Uh, so it would just be accepting. If you didn't, uh, prove it tonight, then I guess we wouldn't accept the grant. So, um, it's not on, I was pretty specific with the agenda item, that's why I didn't, I was worried about that. Yeah. It's, it's very, it's very similar, it's all about digital equity. Maybe we could, but it doesn't hurt to wait till next month, she'll, she'll go ahead and submit it.
Anybody else have any other questions? Comments? Yes, I thank you very much, Jennifer.
Good job.
And, uh, someone care to make a motion to approve the digital equity grant?
I'll make a motion to approve the digital equity grant as presented.
Okay, um, motion was made by Ms. Fitzgerald. Anyone here to second? I'll say. Okay, Joan, maybe do the part, Mr. Robinson, second? Now we can roll call vote, please.
Ula?
Aye.
Please?
Aye.
FitzGerald?
Aye.
Liam?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Brotherton?
Aye.
Swat?
Aye.
And that's unanimous, the motion carries, so, uh, approve. This is on the number twelve, which is an action item, supr�ance contractual services, uh, Ms. Dittier?
Good evening, can you hear me? Yes, okay. Um, so I'm not gonna read this word for word, I know you guys can, um, can see here. This is closely related to what Ms. Ferrex just presented. This contract is for us to be able to access an online platform. Um, it will be specifically used by our school psychologists and our speech pathologists. So, uh, they are still required to complete all their annual evaluations and assessments of children. Our school psychol, our school, um, speech pathologists are still providing all of the services that they, um, have, have provided in the past for students. And they're trying to find a way to provide it to students who are at home. So even our students who chose Learn Academy and are at home, if they qualify for these services, we are still obligated to provide those services. So what this contract is, is, is a platform through which they can provide their services to students. It's interactive, it has embedded curriculum for them. Um, it also provides professional development on how to take what they've typically done in person and, and do it virtually. Um, it also has a component of professional development for parents. And so, uh, a clinician will meet with parents and train them, them on how to support this therapy in the home. Um, kind of the do's and don'ts, and how to, um, get the most out of what we're doing for our students during this year. Um, you can see that we have more than two hundred students who receive speech services, so this will impact a, a pretty significant amount of students. And last year, between our school psychologists and our speech pathologists, they did a hundred and sixty-seven evaluations of students. Um, that we will still be obligated to do throughout this school year. And this was given the, the closure, we still did that many. So, um, it will be seven speech pathologists and three school psychologists.
Anybody have any questions for her? Comments? Thank you, Allison, appreciate it. Welcome, if you have any questions or comments, and with, uh, someone here to make the motion.
I make the motion to approve the President's contracted services contract of approximately twenty-five thousand eight hundred.
Yeah, the motion was made by Mr. Robinson. Anyone here to second?
I'll second.
Uh, Mr. Brotherton, please, sorry, Joan.
That's quite all right.
Mr. Brotherton, uh, seconded. And then we'll do a roll call vote, please.
Robinson?
Aye.
Brotherton?
Aye.
Ula?
Aye.
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
FitzGerald?
Aye.
Swat?
Aye.
All right, it's a unanimous motion carries. So we approve the contract. This was as item number thirteen, which is an action item. This is School Resource Officer, uh, the SRO for the Village Brand Tool Contract for the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one. Total contract for SRO, School Resource Officer, for the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one school year is sixty-nine thousand six hundred and nine dollars, sixty. Seventeen hundred ninety dollars from last year. This information, it covers thirty-seven.
He needs to speak up, I can't hear a word he's saying.
You want me to read it?
Can you hear me now?
Is that better?
Is that better?
Yes.
Yes.
Good.
All right, the total contract for School Resource Officer for the two thousand twenty, twenty-one school year is sixty-nine thousand six hundred and nine dollars and sixty cents. This is an increase of about thirteen hundred ninety dollars. From last year. It covers thirty-seven weeks, which is thirty-six weeks of the school year and one week of training, detailing, two thousand office and conference. Uh, the contract includes the conference fees of fifteen hundred dollars. The conference fee is canceled, and that fifteen hundred dollars will be discounted. The contract has included, um, item, like, uh, tier insurance, unemployment, and some other things. And this cell phone and data access. All right, what, any questions, comments, concerns regarding, uh, SRO contract? Is there any change in approval? Well, if nobody has any, uh, questions, comments, and concerns, unless you can make a motion. Mr. Graham made the motion to approve the School Resource Officer, SRO Village Brand Tool Contract for two thousand twenty, two thousand fifty-one. Second, I second, seconded by Mr. Robinson. I want you to roll call vote, please.
Aye.
FitzGerald?
Aye.
Aye.
Ula?
Aye.
Brotherton?
Aye.
Graham?
Followed back.
It's what?
So we have decent favor and one extension. It's a really, uh, majority, therefore, the School Resource Officer contract is being approved. Next item is, we have two action items, personnel report.
Yes, um, so besides the personnel report, uh, since we, we did hire Amy Blumberg a long time ago. Uh, she is our new Broad Meadow, Broad Meadow principal. And we did ask her to come because finally, uh, we can have open board meetings. So I just wanna briefly, uh, read her bio to the board, and everybody can then say hi to Amy and welcome her to RCS. So, um, Amy is our new Broad Meadow principal. She is, um, she was, before that, she was serving, um, in the Champagne School District as Assistant Principal at Garden Hills Academy. And she was also the principal for all the summer programming. And, um, she's had those roles since two thousand seventeen. Uh, she was selected for the Assistant Principal position at Stratton Academy of the Arts during the sixteen, seventeen school year. Prior to her administrative services, she was an educator with unit four in various capacities. She served as a second grade teacher from ninety-four to ninety-seven. From ninety-seven through two thousand, she served in the dual role of reading recovery teacher and second grade teacher. Beginning in two thousand, she had served as a reading recovery teacher, instructional post, an interventionist, and enrichment teacher before her administrative appointment at Stratton. interventionist, and enrichment teacher before her administrative appointment at Stratton. Ms. Blumberg earned a bachelor's in L. Ed. from Southern in '94, and a master's in education with a reading specialist endorsement from the U of I in '98. She obtained her admin endorsement from U of I in 2000. Ms. Blumberg received her National Board Certification in 2007 and 2017, in early and middle childhood literacy. So she was appointed and started with us this summer. So welcome, Amy.
Any board member have any questions, comments, or concerns regarding Personnel Report as presented?
I make the motion.
Mr. Robinson made the motion to approve the Personnel Report as presented, including the stipulation that all individuals required to comply with all requirements for new hires is indicated by statutes, and RSE's board policy and procedures. Sandra, that was your job. You're supposed to read it.
Let's show a second.
Anyone here to second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Ula, and then we need a roll call vote, please.
FitzGerald.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Robinson.
Aye.
Robinson.
Aye.
Keys.
Aye.
Ula.
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous, and motion carries, and Personnel Report is being approved.
Thank you.
This raises item number 15, which the board should contend in comments. Does anybody have any comments?
The only comment that I thought I would make is, is, we understand, for the public, it is hard to understand us in masks. We were asked by an audience member to remove our masks while we're talking, and we cannot do that. So it gives you a little bit of an idea of what our teachers and administrators in the buildings go through while they're teaching. It, you have to enunciate, you do have to speak up, and it's difficult to read facial expressions, so. Or maybe that's a plus sometimes, but we all need to remember to really, really enunciate, really speak up, and get right into that microphone, so that everybody at home watching us on Zoom can hear what everybody has to say. And it, it is exhausting, but thank you very much for, for that.
Any member give me? I just want to, there's an observation from the summertime in the last few weeks, is our manager and maintenance staff have kind of put in a lot of summer time. They're doing a lot of work, they're doing pretty good. Their effort on Friday, and then they're just.
Thank you.
Mr. Graham, anybody else have any comments? Okay, this moves us to item number 16. It's just an information item. We do have some FOIA requests. Several of them. Yeah, Mr. Anderson did a FOIA, number one, is for the student awards and honors. The total cost of that FOIA was $1,558.54. $871 for employee costs, and $628 for training costs. There was a second FOIA by Mr. Anderson, FOIA number two, for student awards and honors. That totaled $1,312.48. The employee cost on that was $750. The training cost was $563 approximately. And then there was one from Deborah Swad for the reopening questions. Total cost was $23.66, and that was mostly employee costs, $23.66. Since we agreed to, we were to item number 17 and 18, this moves us to number 19. So anyone here to make the motion to adjourn?
I saw.
Okay, motion by Mr. Keys, seconded by Mr. Graham. And so I have to roll call vote. Can I just exercise unanimous consent to adjourn this meeting?
That's positive.
We can use unanimous consent.
I just.
But we'd want to roll call vote.
Okay. Graham.
Aye.
Ula.
Aye.
Robinson.
Aye.
FitzGerald.
Joan.
She's, she's.
Is that aye?
No, I'm mute.
Aye.
Okay, thanks. Robinson.
Aye.
And Swad.
Aye.
It's unanimous. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for showing up, especially those in person, and for those who are. Thank you. Take care of yourselves. God bless you.